Session resumes. Session suspended. Hey, Mikey. Three o'clock now. Long time no see. I miss you. I miss you. No, I was here two weeks ago, one week ago. Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move we take up the additional reference of business, ask the Secretary General to read the titles of the bills and resolutions, and refer them to the proper committees. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved, and the Secretary General is directed to read bills on first reading for appropriate, for referral to the appropriate committees.
Additional reference of business, bills on first reading, House Bill Number 6757 and 658, authorizing the NTC to issue provisional authority to owners and/or operators of public telecommunications entities, radio, television, and/or cable television system, network, and/or stations for their continued operations pending renewal of their congressional franchise. Representative Gonzalez Aurelio.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 6759, supporting the growth and development of digital careers in the Philippines. Representative Villafuerte.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 6760, requiring the establishment of quarantine facilities in every region in the country. Representative Chapeco.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6761, promoting farmer competition, mandating the establishment of farmer competition hubs, adopting the First District of Batan as pilot site. Representative Roman.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 6762, institutionalizing the Balik Provincia Bagong Pagasa Act. Representative Olivares.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6763, amending a provision of RA 7581, protection to consumers by stabilizing the prices of basic necessities and prime commodities during emergency situations. Representative Savelliano.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6764, requiring each agency of the government to establish and implement a policy under which employees should be authorized to telecommute. Representative Romolo.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6765, establishing a fiscal regime for a digital economy. Representative Salceda.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
House Bill 6766, upgrading the minimum salary grade of health workers in government hospitals, research institutions, and LGUs. Representative Beazon.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 6767, requiring owners of media companies to grant hazard pay to media workers. Representative Taduran.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Bill 6769, extending further the term of the franchise granted to Davao Light and Power Company Incorporated to construct, operate, and maintain an electric, light, heat, and power system in Davao City, Panobo City, and Carmen, Duhali, and Santo Tomas, Davao del Norte for a period of 25 years. Representatives Duterte, Ungab, Garcia Vincent, and Gonzalez Sandro.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
Resolutions, House Resolution 882, directing the appropriate committee to inquire upon the ERC and Meralco on the sudden increase in electricity rates and interruptions during the ECQ and GCQ. Representative Laxon.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 883, urging the DILG Secretaries, the Vice Chairperson, for preparedness of the NDRRMC to direct all LGUs to prepare their evacuation centers in view of COVID-19. Representatives Di Faustino Ino.
To the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee.
House Resolution 884, expressing the sense of the House to urge DLE Secretary Sylvester Bellator to recall Taiwan Labor Attache Fidel Macau-Yag for abusing his authority and failing his mandate to protect migrant workers overseas. Representatives Gaite, Zarate, and Kolyamat.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Resolution 885, urging the House Committee on Overseas Worker Affairs and the Defeat COVID-19 Ad Hoc Committee to inquire on the surge of COVID-19 infection among repatriated displaced OFWs and reported risky and dismal situation in quarantine facilities and recommend urgent measures to protect and support OFWs. Representatives Gaite, Zarate, Kolyamat, Castro, Franz, Rosas, and Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message from the Senate, message dated May 18, 2020, informing the House and Senate on even date passed Senate Bill Number 1354 and request the concurrence of the House.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
Committee Report, Report Number 310 of the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries on House Bill Number 6768.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with the leave of the House, I move that we open the privilege hour.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved, and the Chair declares a privilege hour.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Franz Castro of the Partilist Act teachers for her privileged speech.
The Honorable Franz Castro is recognized for her privileged speech.
Maraming salamat, ginawang speaker. At magandang araw, ginawang speaker, at sa mga kapwa ko pinatawan, at sa ating mga mamamayan. Noong nakaraang Biyernes, Mayo 15, ang kinatawang pong ito ay nagtungo sa NBI TOF upang matulungan at damayan si Teacher Ronel Mas na isang social studies teacher ng Taltal National High School sa Sambales. Isa siyang outstanding secondary teacher noong 2019, ngunit kamakailan lang ay inaresto dahil sa kanyang post sa social media. Bilang kinatawan na mga guro, kinukundinapunamin ang ginawa ng NBI kay Teacher Ronel. Dahil kombinasyon ng dami at kilos na mga pulis, napilita si Teacher Ronel na umamin kahit walang abogado. Isinapubliko pa ang kanyang arresting officers at uncounseled confession na ito. Walang indikasyon na sinabihan siya ng kanyang Miranda rights. Dahil kung sinabihan siya, hindi siya titiklop sa pressure. Pinaranas na mga ahente ng NBI ang emotional torture kay Teacher Ronel. Dala ng pressure at coercion, at kahit wala itong independyenting abogado sa loob mismo ng sasakyan, ito umamin. Base sa resolution ng prosecutor, sinabi nito na invalid warrantless arrest ang pag-arusto kay Teacher Ronel. Isang violation ito ng kanyang constitutional rights against unreasonable search and seizure. Dahil sa pwersahang pagpapaamin, nilabag rin ang kanyang right against self-incrimination at custodial rights. At alam naman natin na mababa lang ang sahod na mga guro sa pampublicong paaralan, at madalas pa nga puro loan ang mga ito. Kahit siguro 100,000 ay wala si Teacher Ronel. Kung kaya't hindi actual threat at post ni Teacher Ronel na 50 million bounty, sa makatuwid, ang post na ikinagalit na mga NBI o pulis ay isang satirical comments ukol sa panlipunang kalagayan. Dahil ramdam niya ang abang kalagayan ng mamamayan dahil sa COVID-19 pandemic, at nakikita sa paligid mismo kilos at pananalitaan na mga opisyal at ng pangulo ang mga kapalpakan, kabagalan, at kakulangan ng COVID response na pamahalaan. Ginagarantian naman ang ating konstusyon ang malayang pamamahayag at pagsabi ng ating hinahing laban sa gobyerno. Kung kaya't wala namang masamang intensyon si Teacher Ronel sa kanyang post. Kagabi ay nirilis na si Teacher Ronel dahil sa bisa ng bail na nanggaling sa Branch 72 ng RTC sa Olongapo. Ang alam niyo po ang naging emotional si Teacher Ronel paglabas niya doon sa NBI. At maging sabi na kanyang nanay, pag sakay sa loob ng sasakyan ay talagang nagehysterical siya at nagsisigaw. Kaya ramdam na ramdam natin kagabi ang kanyang takot, ang kanyang naranasang emotional na torture doon sa pagkakahuli sa kanya. Kaya ngayon si Teacher Ronel ay nag-aundergo ng psychological therapy. Kaya ito 'yung idinulot ng ginawang pag-arusto ilegal na detention kay Teacher Ronel. Hinahighlight ng pag-arusto at pag-sampa ng kaso kay Teacher Ronel ang double standards at hindi pagsunod sa due process. Isa siyang ordinaryong mamamayan na naglabas lamang ng kanyang pagkadismaya sa pangulo dahil sa pagtrato nito sa COVID-19 pandemic. Habang ang mga bigating opisyal na tahasang lumalabag sa batas ay hindi naman pinaparusahan. Kapag ordinaryong mamamayan at kritiko ng pamahalaan, ilegal na warrantless arrest at patong-patong na rights violation samantalang kapag political nakaalyado, appointee na pinuno ng pulisya, at propagandista ay nananawagan ng kompasyon o idadaan sa regular na proseso simula sa subina, pagpapaliwanag kung ano ba 'yung post, katulad na lamang ng ginawa kay Asek Mokauson. Inimbitahan at pinagpaliwanag lang, samantalang malinaw naman ito na meron itong violasyon doon sa Bayanihan Act. Patuloy ang panawagan namin na pabilisin at palawakin ang ayuda, itigil na ang political repression laban sa mamamayan. Sa panahon ng matinding medical na krisis, dapat nabukas ang gobyerno sa puna at kritisismo dahil dito mang gagaling ang pagwawasto sa mga kapalpakan at kakulangan nito. Sa panahon na sinusubukang patayin ang coronavirus, hindi dapat patayin ang batayang constitutional rights. Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Muli, magandang hapon po sa ating lahat.
Majority Leader. Mr. Speaker, move to suspend the session. Session suspended. Session resumes.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the Honorable Franz Castro to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate actions.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved, and the privileged speech of the Honorable Franz Castro is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
I move that you recognize the Honorable Representative Epcas for his privileged speech. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Adriano A. Epcas of the Partilist Ako Padayon Filipino is hereby recognized for his privileged speech. The Honorable Epcas proceed.
Mga kinatawan ng Kongreso na nasa plinario ngayon, at sa mga kasama ko na nasa telecontrain sa SOM, magandang hapon po sa inyong lahat. Ako po ay nandito ngayon para ibahagi ang mga kahirapan na dinaranas ng ating sambayanang Pilipino sa sektor ng enerhiya sa pagpatupad ng enhanced community quarantine soluson noong Marso at ang kasalanan na quarantine sa mga lugar sa bansa. Lubos po na bumaba ang kabuoang demand ng kuryente sa ating bansa. Dahil po sa dinulot ng pandemyang ito, madami po ang nawalan ng hanapbuhay at marami ang nawalan ng kapasidad na magbayad sa pang-araw-araw na gastusin. Bagamat gumagawa ng paraan ang ating gobyerno upang matulungan ang ating mga kababayan, batid naming mga representante ng Power Black na may ipapaabot pa na karaghangang tulong para sa bawat kabahayan na kumukonsumo ng kuryente. Mr. Speaker, kami ay nagpapasalamat sa advisory na inilabas ng Energy Regulatory Commission noong March 17, 2020, April 15, at May 5, 2020, na nagdedirikta sa mga generation companies na magbigay ng palugit sa pagbabayad ng mga power bills hanggang May 15, 2020. Bukod dito, batid namin ang posibleng pataas ng presyo ng kuryente. Kaya noong April 14, 2020, kami pong Power Black ay sumulat kay President Duterte at kay Cabinet Secretary Carlo Nogralis para po ipahatid ang request ng Philippine Rural Electric Cooperatives Association of Elrica at ng National Association of General Managers of Electric Cooperatives Unagmet para matugunan ang pangamba ng ating mga konsumante pagdating sa posibleng epekto ng COVID-19 pandemic sa bayarin sa kuryente. Mr. Speaker, salihan po ng ito sa ngalan ng 121 electric cooperatives, kami po ay humihiling po ng konserasyon sa mga power suppliers para sa mga sumusunod na billing adjustments. Unang, na maipagpaliban ang minimum energy optic sa mga kontrata ng power suppliers sa mga distribution utilities gaya ng electric cooperatives dahil sa pagbaba ng demand dulot na pagsasaran ng mga establismento. Nanganganib na tumaas ang bayarin sa kuryente dahil hindi maabot ang mga electric cooperatives ang minimum energy optic sa kanilang mga kontrata sa power suppliers. Ikalawa, ay ang pag-alaw na ang contract capacity charges peso per kilowatt per month ay ibabasi sa actual nomination ng electric cooperatives. Sa pagkat, lubos na tataas ang presyo ng kuryente kung hindi ito maipapatupad. At ang ikahuli, ang maiapply pa rin ang prompt payment discount sa deeper payment scheme base sa Energy Regulatory Commission Advisory. Ang mga kahilingan ito ay upang maprotektahan ang bawat konsumante ng kuryente mula sa pangtaas ng presyo ng kuryente dulot ng kinakaharap nating krisis ngayon. Magiging malaking tulong sa bawat pamilya ang mababang bayarin sa kuryente sapagkat ang matitipid nila dito ay maipandadagdag para sa ibang pangangailangan. Sa mga kasama namin sa Kongreso, Mr. Speaker, samahan ninyo kami sa aming panawagan sa mga power suppliers na sana ay mabigyan konserasyon ang aming pakiusap para sa kapangatapakanan ng bawat Pilipino kumukonsumo ng kuryente. Lalo na ngayon na malakas ang ating paggamit dahil sa mainit na panahon at dahil nakakarantin. Ito po ang uras para tulungan natin ang isa't isa at ang mga lubos na nangangailangan. Hindi po natin masasabi kung kailan matatapos ang pandemya ito. At wala pong kasiguraduhan ngayon kung ano ang mga mangyayari. Kaya kami po ay humihiling ng pangunawa at pagkakaisa upang maprotektahan ang ating mamamayan at matulungan na malapasan ang krisis na dalaan ng pandemyang COVID-19. Mr. Speaker, maraming salamat po sa privilehiyong nakapagsalita para maiparating ang aming panawagan. Kami ang mga representante ng mga electric cooperatives at member consumer owners ay patuloy na kilos at magtatrabaho upang masiguradong patuloy ang supply ng kuryente sa bawat kabahayan sa panahon ngayon. Makakaasa ang bawat mamayang Pilipino na patuloy kami mangangalampag sa power suppliers upang maibsan ang hirap na kinakaharap ng bawat consumers ngayon. Muli, maraming salamat at sabay-sabay nating lapasan ang hamon na ito.
Majority Leader.
That ends my piece. And thank you, Honorable Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move to refer the speech of the Honorable Epcas to the Committee on Rules for proper referral to the Choice Committee.
See, an objection. The Chair hears none. Motion is approved, and the privileged speech of the Honorable Epcas is so referred. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move we recognize the Honorable Sara Elago for her privileged speech. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Sara Jane I. Elago of the Partilist Kabataan is recognized for her privileged speech. The Honorable Elago may proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend for a minute to give our technical people time to organize the audio of the Honorable Elago.
Session suspended.
Robbie.
Session resumes. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before we recognize the Honorable Guya, I first want to put on record that the Honorable Elago will just make her privileged speech next week because we cannot seem to organize her audio. So with this, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to recognize the Honorable Guya. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Godofredo N. Guya of the Partilist Recoboda is recognized for his privileged speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Magandang hapon po sa mga kinatawan ng Kongreso na nasa plinario. Sa hapon ito, kayunin sa ating mga kasamaang representante sa iba't ibang dako ng bansa, kasama sa ating virtual session. Magandang hapon din po sa ating mga kababayan na nakaantabay sa atin. Sa nakaraang May 1, ay pinagdiwang natin ang araw na mga manggagawa. Naging kaugalian na natin mga Pilipino ang ialay ang araw na ito upang papurihan at parangalan ang natatanging contribution ng ating mga manggagawa sa iba't ibang sektor ng lipunan. Mula ng magdeklarat ang ating pangulo ng state of emergency, ay binigyan ng mandato ang publiko upang manatili sa ating mga tahanan ika na stay home, stay safe. Layunin ng lockdown na maiwasan ang pagkalat ng COVID-19 dahil dito may privilehiyo ang pangkalahatan sa atin na maging ligtas at sa panganim at malayo sa sakuna. Ngunit kaliwas ito para sa ating magigiting na frontliners, ang hamon sa kanila ay ang patuloy na pagsisilbi sa bayan. Papalag tayo sapagkat hindi nagstasawa ang ating mga frontliners na magsilbing dipinsan natin sa ating kalabang hindi nakikita. Na din diwala ako na ang nag-uumapaw na support para sa kanila ay narapat lamang. Sa hapon ito, Mr. Speaker, ay nais ko pong gamitin ang privilehiyong makapagsalita sa harap ninyo upang ipaabot ang taos pusong pagpupugay sa ating mga sundalo ng pailaw o ang mga manggagawa ng energy sector. Ang tinutukoy ko po na mga energy sector frontliners ay ang ating office personnel na patuloy na tumutukon sa mga nakatalungan ng ating mga member consumer owners. Mga nitrigers, mga line workers, linemen na nangangalaga sa integridad ng ating mga poste at sinisigurado ang tuloy-tuloy na daloy ng kuryente. Madalas ay pahapya lamang ang pagbanggit sa ating mga kasama sa energy sector. Sa kaliwatkanan, pagkilala sa ating mga frontliner ay di makakailang may mga pagkakataon na kakatalitaan natin ang magbigay-pugay sa mga empleyado, mga nitrigers, mga line workers. Ang mga manggawang dahilan kung bakit tayong lahat ay may tuloy-tuloy ka-supply ng kuryente sa ating mga tahanan sa kabila ng krisis ng ating pinagdaraanan. Ang ating mga kasamaang sundalo ng pailaw ay tinataya ang kanilang kaligtasan upang masigurado ang tuloy-tuloy na daloy ng kuryente. Lalo na sa mga industriyang nangangailangan ito gaya ng hospital, pamilyan, at ilan pang sintro ng komersyo na nagbibigay silbisyo sa ating mga kababayan. Hindi ninyo alintana ang mabilad sa mapagparusang init ng araw. Iniindarin ninyo ang panganim ng palagi ang pagkikisa namuha sa iba at buong tatag ninyong hinaharap ang lahat ng pagsubok sa pagpapailaw. Hindi bago ang kabyanehan ito sa inyo maging sa panahon ng bagyo, lindol, at ano bang hamon ng panahon. Palagi ninyo inuuna ang kapakada ng bayan kaysa sa inyong sariling kaligtasan. Ngunit sa akibat ng mga panganim na ito ay ang katotohan ng handa kayong magalay ng inyong buhay sa ngalan ng silbisyo. Noong Februari 17 ng taong ito, ay nagsalita ako sa plinario kasama ang mga kinatawan ng Ako Black mula sa Pelreca, Epek, at Ako Padayon upang bigay-pugay sa ating mga sundalo ng pailaw kasabay ng pagalala sa mga hinawian ng buhay sa pagtupad ng kanilang tungkolin. Sila ang ating mga fallen warriors of life. Tunay na ang panganim po ang pagpapailaw. Sa katunayan, simulan ang na-implementa ang lockdown. Tatlong magigiting na sundalo ng pailaw na po akipinaya ang buhay sa ngalan ng silbisyo. Ito ay sinalio, axonon ng Isabela II Electric Cooperative, Carl RJ Balinas Mula ng Gimaras Electric Cooperative at Prodecan Dolor ng Espagado Electric Cooperative. At OBLAC ay mataas ang pagkilala sa inyo. Hindi po namin makakalimutan ang iyong sakripisyo. Nakakaluman na nawalan tayong ng mga kasamang sa ating layunin mapailaw. Ngunit sa inyong kadaktilahan, kami uhugot ng lakas upang harapin ang bukas. Mahaba pa po ang tatahakin nating landas. Landon pa rin ang mga sitwasyon gaya nito akibat na ng pagsisilbi natin sa sampayanan ang napakaraming sakripisyo. Ngunit nais ko po sanang ipaalam sa ating mga sundalo ng pailaw na hindi kayo nag-iisa sa labang ito. Makakaasa kayo kami, kenyong mga kasangga sa kongreso ay hindi titigil upang paglaban ang inyong mga pilipisyo at kapakanan. Alam nating lahat na nakapakahalaga ang tuloy-tuloy na daloy ng kuriente sa panahon ng COVID-19. Kung gaya, lubos po ang aming pasasalamat at paghaga sa inyong silbisyong hindi matatawaran. Ang ating mga sundalo ng pailaw na nagsisilbing energy sector frontliners. Mag-ingat kayo palagi at dawa ay patubayan kayo ng may kapal sa inyong araw-araw na tungkolin. Muli, sa ngalan ng Recoboda, saludo kami sa inyo mga sundalo ng pailaw. Maraming salamat po, Honorable Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer the privileged speech of the Honorable Godofredo Guya to the Committee on appropriate, to the Committee on Rules for Its Appropriate Action. So move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved and the speech of the Honorable Godofredo Guya is so referred. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move we suspend the privilege hour. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved and the privilege hour is suspended. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we take up bills for approval on third reading. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move we consider for third reading House Bill Number 5083. And for this purpose, request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 5083 and thereafter, call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 5083, Providing for Restructuring and Condomination of Unpaid Interest, Penalties, and Surcharges on Loans Secured by Farmers, Fisherfolk, and Agri-Reform Beneficiaries from the Department of Reform, Department of Agriculture, People's Credit and Finance Corporation, Cooperative Development Authority, National Food Authority, and Dakadan and Rural Credit Guarantee Corporation. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 5083. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abu Exaldivar, Abunda, Ako, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Jong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hinaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Banpa, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Chienza, Mentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Vascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatano Alan Peter Compañero, Kayatano Mariala Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tungalao, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Kowanko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Santos Montalia, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, D. Faustino Ino, D. Faustino Michael III, D. Ian Paul, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farines Ria, Farines Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Frere Juliet, Frere Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Carbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Gorseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Areesco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halos Jos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazutin, Riachon, Legarda, Lim, Limcaychong, Lopez, Leola, Losotan, Kapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoletta, Mariano Hernandez, Mariño, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natibidad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerco, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Ronnie, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pakya Alberto, Pakya Rojelyo, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez Sato, Ramos, Rimulia, Rivilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao, Silveiro, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sinsoat, Swansing Estrita, Swansing Horacio, Suarez Aleta, Suarez David, Sunthay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharie, Tan Tambut, Tejada, Teves, Arnulfo Teves Jose, Tianko, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Schutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali, Alfonso, Umali, María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Brother Eddie, Villanueva, Noel, Villiar, Villiarasa Suarez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu, Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With 203 in the affirmative, zero negative and zero abstentions, House Bill 5083 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, next on the bills to be approved on third reading. Mister Speaker, may we consider, I move we consider House Bill Number 6137 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill and thereafter proceed to call the roll for nominal voting. I so move, Mister Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 6137 and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6137, Encouraging Corporate Social Responsibility, Providing Incentives Therefore. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Number 6137. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abu Exaldivar, Abunda, Ako, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Ad Jong, Advinkula, Agabas, Agarao, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Hinaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, At Chienza, Mentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Barzaga, Vascog, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulot, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatano Alan Peter Compañero, Kayatano Mariala Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tungalao, Coangelica, Coelizaldi, Kowanko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Kuaresma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, Jesus, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Muhammad Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, D. Faustino Ino, D. Faustino Michael III, D. Ian Paul, Ebcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Regel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farines Ria, Farines Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Frere Juliet, Frere Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Carbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Gorseta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Areesco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halos Jos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon,
Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia tion, Legarda, Lim Limkaytong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jericho, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tianco, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiarasa Suárez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With two hundred and nine affirmative votes, zero opposed and zero abstentions, House Bill 6137 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill 6139. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 6139 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6139, Institutionalizing and Enhancing the Role of Parent Teacher and Community Associations in Promoting the Welfare and Protecting the Rights of Children. Roll Call of Members in consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 6139. Abante, Abaya, Abelanosha, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta Alba, Acosta, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Bersaga, Bascug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Kabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredenil, Kayatano Alan Peter, Kayatano María La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalau, Coangelika, Coelizaldi, Coangko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Colyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farínias Ria, Farínias Rudy Caesar, Fernández Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, García Jose Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptali, González Sandro, Goroceta, Guiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández Herrera D., Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Jiménez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Konghun Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia tion, Legarda, Lim Limkaytong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jericho, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes Rodriguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tianco, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiarasa Suárez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With two hundred and nine affirmative votes, zero negative votes and zero abstentions, House Bill 6139 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on...
With leave of the House, we will correct the vote count for House Bill 5083 earlier. Earlier it was reported that we had two hundred and three affirmative votes. The correction is that it was two hundred and nine affirmative votes. Therefore, with two hundred and nine affirmative votes, zero negative votes and zero abstentions, House Bill 5083 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill Number 5855, copies of which were distributed to the members pursuant to the rules of the House. And for this purpose, Mr. Speaker, may I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 5855 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 5855, Establishing the Second District Engineering Office in Compostela, Dawao de Oro. Roll Call of Members in consideration of House Bill Number 5855. Abante, Abaya, Abelanosha, Abu, Abueg, Saldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Bersaga, Bascug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Kabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredenil, Kayatano Alan Peter Campañero, Kayatano María La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalau, Coangelika, Coelizaldi, Coangko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Colyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farínias Ria, Farínias Rudy Caesar, Fernández Fernando, Ferrajuliet, Ferr Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, García Jose Enrique, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, González, Aurelio Dong, González Neptali, González Carlo, Goroceta, Gico, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández Herrera D., Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Jiménez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Konghun Labad Labad, Laxson, Laxson Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Lia tion, Legarda, Lim Limkaytong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marino, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jericho, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uano Dison, Pacquiao Alberto, Pacquiao Rogelio, Padiernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichay, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramírez Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes Rodriguez, Roman Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sacdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Repto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savelliano, Xiao, Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tehada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tianco, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unavia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villiar, Villiarasa Suárez, Villiarica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waikorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With two hundred and eight affirmative votes, zero negative votes and zero abstentions, House Bill 5855 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bill... of House Bill Number 2397, May 19, Special Non-Working Holiday of Butuan Balangay Festival. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and therefore to call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none, motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 2397 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 2397, Declaring May 19, A Special Non-Working Holiday in Butuan Balangay Festival. Roll Call of Members in consideration of House Bill Number 2397. Abante, Abaya, Abelanosha, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atsienza, Aumentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Bersaga, Bascug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Kabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castrofranz, Castrofredenil, Kayatano Alan Peter Campañero, Kayatano María La Arni, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tsungalau, Coangelika, Coelizaldi, Coangko, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuwa, Quaresma, Cueva, Colyamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Dasa de Jesús, De Venesia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Los Montalia, Dimaporo Abdullah, Dimaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Epcas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farínias Ria, Farínias Rudy Caesar. Farinyes Ria, Farinyes Rudy Caesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Goroceta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinio, Marquez Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad, Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Balanyaon, Huaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uanodison, Pacia Alberto, Pacia Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes Rodriguez, Román Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roques, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez Sangkopan, Santos Recto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Weykorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With two hundred nine in favor, zero opposed and zero abstentions, House Bill 2397 is approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bills 4939 and House Bill 5027, establishing of various fish ports. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears no. Motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the titles of House Bills 4939 and 5027 and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 4939, establishing fish port in Barangay Makuyon Siraway Samboanga del Norte. And House Bill Number 5027, establishment of fish port in Barangay Malintubuan Labason Samboanga del Norte. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Numbers 4939 and 5027. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatano Alan Peter, Kayatano Mariala Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tungalaw, Coangelika, Coelizaldi, Cohuango, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, Jesus de Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Loso Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyes Ria, Farinyes Rudy Caesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goroceta, Guiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinio, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad, Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Balanyaon, Huaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uanodison, Pacia Alberto, Pacia Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodriguez, Román Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sangkopan, Santos Recto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas, Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Weykorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With two hundred and ten in favor, zero opposed and zero abstentions, House Bills 4939 and 5027 are approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bills Numbers 6441, 6442, 6443, 6445, 6446, 6447, and 6448 about tourist destinations, cultural heritage tourism zones, and ecotourism zones. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills and thereafter to call the roll for nominal voting. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears no. Motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the titles of the bills and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill 6441, including, Arrevalo Plaza in Iluilo City as a cultural heritage tourism zone. House Bill Number 6442, declaring Mount Araya a tourist destination zone. House Bill Number 6443, an act declaring Gangub Cave in Batarazap Palawan as an ecotourism site. House Bill Number 6445, an act declaring Pilis Falls in Samalbataan an ecotourism site. House Bill Number 6446, an act declaring Palani Beach in Baludmasbate an ecotourism zone. House Bill Number 6447, an act declaring Batogan Peak Cave and Underground River in Mandaoon Masbate as an ecotourism zone. House Bill Number 6448, an act declaring Kapang Yan Falls in Palawan an ecotourism site. Roll call of members in consideration of the said House Bills. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatano Alan Peter Campañero, Kayatano Mariala Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tungalaw, Coangelika, Coelizaldi, Cohuango, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, Jesus de Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Loso Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Mohamed Khalid, Duavit, Duali, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael III, Di Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ecleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Ermita Buain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyes Ria, Farinyes Rudy Caesar, Fernandez Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis Flores, Fortune, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Sharon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Goed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez, Aurelio Dong, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Carlo, Goroceta, Giko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halushos, Javier, Jimenez, Coelisa, Co Wilton, Kong Hun Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liatson, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, Lopez, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinio, Marquez Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad, Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan Fidel, Nolasco, Núñez Balanyaon, Huaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uanodison, Pacia Alberto, Pacia Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramires Sato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes Rivera, Robes Rodriguez, Román Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yedamarí, Romualdo, Romulo, Roques, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez Sangkopan, Santos Recto, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savillano, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sin Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horacio, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Shamir, Tan Sharri, Tan Shurni, Tejada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gómez, Tulfo, Tupas Chutor, Ti Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali, María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Uy Juliet, Uy Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villia, Villia Fuerte, Villanueva, Brother Eddie, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villaraza Suarez, Villarica, Violago, Yap Eric Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Weykorat, Zarate Zubiri.
With two hundred and thirteen in favor, zero negative and zero abstentions, House Bills 6441, 6442, 6445, 6446, and 6447 are approved on third and final reading. And with a vote of two hundred fourteen in favor, zero negative and zero abstentions, House Bills 64, 63, and 6448 are approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration on third reading of House Bills 6467, 6491, 6492 pertaining to national roads and highways. May I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the said bills and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears no. Motion is approved and the Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bills and thereafter call the roll for nominal voting.
House Bill Number 6467, renaming the portion of the Mountain Province Boundary Kalanan and Riller Road, City of Tabukkalinga, as Manuel S. Agiao Boulevard. House Bill Number 6491, mandating the full rehabilitation and maintenance of Cannon Road under the Department of Public Works and Highways. House Bill Number 6492, converting the Sagada Besaw Kirino Ilocosur Road into a national road. Roll call of members in consideration of House Bill Numbers 6467, 6491, and 6492 on third reading. Abante, Abaya, Abelianosa, Abu, Abueg Saldivar, Abunda, Acop, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adyong, Advincula, Agabas, Agarau, Aglipay, Aginaldo, Albano, Almario, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Henaro, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante Matba, Amatong, Andaya, Angara, Aragones, Arbison, Arenas, Arroyo, Atienza, Amentado, Babasa, Bagatsing, Balindong, Banyas Nograles, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Baskug, Bautista, Bautista Bandigan, Belmonte, Benitez, Bernos, Biazon, Biliones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bordado, Bravo, Brosas, Bulut, Bustos, Kabatbat, Kabotchan, Cabredo, Cagas, Calderon, Kalixto, Caminero, Campos, Kanama, Kawagdan, Kari, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fredinil, Kayatano Alan Peter, Kayatano Mariala Arnie, Celeste, Chato, Chipeco, Tungalaw, Coangelika, Coelizaldi, Cohuango, Coliantes, Crisologo, Kuah, Cuaresma, Cueva, Coliamat, Dagook, Dalipe, Dalog, Datol, Daza, Jesus de Venecia, Defensor Lawrence, Defensor Michael, Delmar, De Los Santos, De Loso Montalia. Delmar, De Los Santos, De Loso Montalia, Demaporo Abdullah, Demaporo Khalid, Duavit, Duhalid, Duterte, Di Faustino Ino, Di Faustino Michael, Di Ian Paul, Ebkas, Ekleyo, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Ergel, Ermitabuhain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrella, Farinyas Ria, Farinyas Rudy Caesar, Fernandez, Fernando, Ferrer Juliet, Ferrer Luis, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Frasco, Fuentebelia, Gaite, Garbin, Garcia Jose Enrique, Garcia Pablo John, Garcia Vincent, Garin Janet, Garin Charon, Gasataya, Gatchalian, Gato, Heron, Go Ed, Go Mark, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Guiko, Gulyas, Guya, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernandez, Herrera Di, Hofer, Halosjos, Javier, Jimenez, Ko Elisa, Ko Wilton, Konghun, Labad Labad, Laxon, Laxon Noel, Lagman, Lagon, Lara, Lazatin, Liachon, Legarda, Lim, Limkaychong, López, Loyola, Losotan, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Mangawang, Magundadato, Marcoleta, Mariano Hernandez, Marinho, Marquez, Martinez, Matba, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Momo, Natividad Naganyo, Nava, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Juan, Nolasco, Núñez Malanyaon, Uwaminal, Olivares, Ong Jose, Ong Roni, Ortega, Uwano Disson, Pakia Alberto, Pakia Rogelio, Padjernos, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panotes, Peña, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Puno, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramirasato, Ramos, Remulia, Revilia, Reyes, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand, Romualdes Yeda, Romaldo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaryas, Sakaluran, Salceda, Salimbangon, Salo, Sanchez, Sankopan, Santos Rekt, Sarmiento, Saulug, Savelliano, Xiao Silverio, Singson, Singson Mihan, Sing Suat, Swansing Estrelita, Swansing Horasyo, Suárez Aleta, Suárez David, Sun Tay, Si Alvarado, Taduran, Talyado, Tambunting, Tan Alisa, Tan Angelina, Tan Samir, Tan Shari, Tan Shurney, Tehada, Teves Arnulfo, Teves Jose, Tiyango, Tolentino, Torres Gomez, Tulfo, Tupas, Turti, Alan, Ti Diego, Umali Alfonso, Umali María Victoria, Unabia, Ungab, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Valeriano, Val Mayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso, Vergara, Villa, Villa Fuerte, Villanueva Eduardo, Villanueva Noel, Villar, Villara, Suárez, Villa Rica, Violago, Yap Eric, Yap Victor, Yu Zamora Ronaldo, Zamora Waykorat, Zarate, Zubiri.
With a count of 217 affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions for House Bill 6491, and with a count of 216 in favor, zero opposed and zero abstentions for House Bill 6467, House Bills 6467 and 6491 are approved on third and final reading. And with a count of 216 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions for House Bill 6492, House Bills 6467, 6491, and 6492 are approved on third and final reading. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume with a privilege hour.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved and the privilege hours is reopened.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that the gentleman from the 4th District of Pangasinan, the Honorable Kuist Nang Bayan, Representative Christopher De Venesia, be recognized to avail of the privilege hour.
The Honorable De Venesia of the 4th District of Pangasinan is recognized for his privileged speech.
Mr. Speaker, thank you so much to my distinguished colleague from Manila, the honorable gentlewoman from Manila, Cristal Bagatsing. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I come before you today to speak about an issue that is admittedly very close to my heart on many levels, the issue of renewing... Mr. Chair, I'm very sorry. Could I ask for one minute's suspension?
Session suspended. Session resumes and the Honorable De Venesia is once again recognized for his privileged speech.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, my distinguished colleagues. Again, good afternoon. Today is the 20th of May, 2020. At the turn of the decade, as we waited to welcome the year with perfect vision, open hearts, and open arms, nobody could have predicted what was coming. The year 2020 started off with a literal bang. The first few weeks, we were greeted with the eruption of the Taal volcano. Meanwhile, on the other side of the globe, an international conflict was brewing between powerful nations. We lost a global icon who we honored in these distinguished halls, beloved by so many while wildfires ravaged the land down under. We have barely picked ourselves up from these tragic events, especially with increasing globalization and the digital space bringing our cultural experiences closer together when yet another disaster hit us, the scale of which we've not experienced in this generation or the generations before. COVID-19, the deadly virus that has infected more than 4 million people across the world in a matter of months and claimed the lives of over 300,000 individuals. In the Philippines alone, the DOH has confirmed that as of May 18, 12,942 Filipinos have been infected with a death toll of 837. Our hearts and prayers go out to the families of those whose lives were taken by this deadly pandemic. And as if these statistics and mortalities weren't enough, COVID-19 has also brought devastating effects to our economy. Many sectors have undoubtedly been affected by this enhanced community quarantine. By now, you must have seen the Moody's heat map and all the studies that show which industries are heavily, moderately, and slightly impacted by this pandemic. The workers from the public transport sector were among the first, followed by those from manufacturing, retail, and other services. Tourism is also heavily hit, as shared to us by Chairperson Sol Aragones in a privileged speech a few weeks ago. Paolo Mercado, founder and president of the Creative Economy Council of the Philippines, a non-stock, nonprofit organization dedicated to helping the Philippines become a globally competitive creative economy, generated an impact analysis of COVID-19 on our creative industries. With one being low impact and fast recovery, and five being very high impact and very slow recovery, he scored culture and natural heritage based on revenues from visitor fees as 4.1. Performance and celebration deriving revenue from audience tickets as 4.8, and visual arts and artisan products based on revenue of sale of products as 3.4, meaning high impact and slow recovery. Apart from those mentioned by Mr. Mercado, many of our colleagues in the House of Representatives and numerous public figures have spoken up for and on behalf of many other sectors. This is why I am here before you today, my dear colleagues, to shed light on the effects of the pandemic and the ACQ on a sector that is very close to my heart and that has been overlooked for the longest time in the country, the freelancers or the workers in the so-called gig economy. So let me share a personal story before I get into this. I started out as a freelancer, I still am in a way. Before joining politics, I was a theater actor. Then I became a director, and then an artistic director for a theater company, and then a producer for the stage. I must have taken after my grandfather, Doc Jose Pérez, who founded Sampagita Pictures, one of the country's most illustrious film companies during the golden age of Philippine cinema. In my earlier years, I was a child actor and appeared in both TV and the silver screen. During college and in the last decade, I served as the columnist and editor for a youth section in a national broadsheet. I wrote and contributed articles to various publications. I contributed content to books that got published and sold in bookstores nationwide. I also became a lifestyle editor for a major glossy. In short, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, I was a writer and also a theater artist, both of which fall under the category of a freelancer. I spent hours, sometimes days, perfecting how the words fell on the page or how the elements onstage came together. It was a passion that with determination became my proud profession. I was living the freelance life to the fullest, and to this day, my closest friends are freelancers who through their unique and unabashed skills and talents are able to help shape, mold, and sculpt the soul and consciousness of our nation and at times even the national conversation. Case in point, Full House Theater Company's Anghuling El Bimbo, featuring the songs of the Eraserheads, themselves freelancers, which streamed via Facebook and YouTube just last week and garnered millions of views, 7 million when I last checked. Or let's go to many months back, the world-class opening ceremony of the 30th Southeast Asian Games that no less than our speaker Alan Peter Kayatano spearheaded, showcasing hundreds of world-class Filipino performers made possible by hundreds of production staff behind the scenes and where no less than the president himself, Rodrigo Rova Duterte, was dancing to the popular OPM hit Manila, another product or creative output of a group of freelancers, the OPM band Hot Dog. My dear colleagues, these freelancers, whether in music production, film, photography, visual arts, fashion, culinary arts, television, animation, literary arts, jewelry design, and many others, are tireless, passionate, and work incredibly hard to perfect their craft, deliver on their commitments to their clients with utmost professionalism, and strive so hard to make ends meet for themselves and their families. They go from paycheck to paycheck and have managed to survive before the ECQ, percolating concentric, complex, and hyphenated industries that power our creative economy. I want to start by pointing out that the gig economy to which our creative workers and freelancers belong not only contributes to nation building insofar as igniting the spirit and soul of our nation is concerned, but that their capacity for job and revenue generation makes them an important actor in both our local and national economy. During this ECQ, stakeholders from the live events sector banded together to form what is known as the National Live Events Coalition PH, a broad agroupation of stakeholders who work in a sector that most likely organized your weddings when you tied the knot with your partners and your daughter's debuts when they came of age. They put up your children's parties and many other social events that you and I gaily frequented before this new normal. They mounted concerts we attended, parties and festivals that your sons and daughters or you yourselves might have rocked out to while singing along to your favorite bands. Their workers sang and played instruments while you dined in restaurants, bars, and hotel lounges. They produced your favorite theater productions, operas, ballets, dances, orchestral, jazz, and cultural performances, comedy, improv, that provided on a regular Friday, Saturday, or Sunday night, maybe even during the weekdays. I recently gleaned from a study conducted by the National I recently gleaned from a study conducted by the National Live Events Coalition PH, which was generated during the ECQ, that their sector alone generated an estimated gross revenue of almost two hundred billion pesos in twenty nineteen and early twenty twenty. In addition, the live events sector generates about five hundred thousand events per year, provides employment to more than three hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred individuals nationwide, across twenty-seven thousand various business enterprises belonging to the MSME sector. This number is likely to be higher, given the limitations of the study. The newly-formed League of Event and Activation Agencies of the Philippines, or LEAP, one of the stakeholders in this broad coalition, conducted a quick online survey last April thirty among its set of stakeholders. Out of sixty-eight respondents from their growing network, of which fifty are registered corporations, fifteen are single proprietorships, and three are partnerships. It was revealed that the subsector provided a diverse array of services to corporate clients that difference scale and budget. From corporate and lifestyle events, media launches, concert production, conventions, and expos, or what is called "mix", fashion events, sporting events, and the like, it was estimated to contribute ninety-seven billion to an overall total of two hundred billion pesos based on two thousand nineteen statistics, of which forty-one billion pesos. Of course, the live events sector is just a slice of the bigger pie known as the creative economy. In a position paper by the Film Development Council of the Philippines, or FDCT, they noted that the Intellectual Property Office of the Philippines, or IPOfil, estimated that the income generated by creative industries, both core and non-core copyright-based, is at six hundred eighty-nine billion pesos. This includes the film and audiovisual content industry, which comprises about eleven thousand micro, small, and medium enterprises, and eight major companies that provide employment to over four hundred sixty thousand workers. The cinema sector alone, according to FDCT Chairperson Lisa Dino Segarra, generated approximately eleven point five billion in gross box office revenues, while three point sixty-five billion was generated in audiovisual and related services in twenty eighteen. According to a two thousand twelve global study conducted by Ernst &amp; Young, by twenty twenty, around one out of five workers will be freelancers. In the Philippines, that would be about twenty-one point thirty-four million Filipinos. This is not discounting the fact that a percentage of workers within these industries are considered formal workers by these specific MSMEs. Another twenty nineteen report by Pioneer on the Global Gig Economy Index shows that Philippines was sixth in the world as the fastest-growing market for the gig economy, with a twenty-five percent growth in freelance earnings. Unfortunately, even before the COVID-19 pandemic, the gig economy was already one of the most vulnerable sectors of our society. Being a staunch advocate of culture and the arts, of which most of its stakeholders are considered freelance, I have taken part in numerous congressional hearings tackling bills aimed at improving the welfare of workers from this sector. I know it's against the rules to talk about specific bills filed in the committee, so I will refrain from doing so. But I have heard firsthand accounts of freelancers and captains of industry and their experience of doing freelance or creative work in this country. Film Development Council of the Philippines Chairperson Lisa Dino Segarra shared that seventy percent of those working in the audiovisual industry, comprising film, television, and other emerging digital media, are freelancers. She shared how often freelancers engage in work with clients through a kaliwaan system, meaning to say without the protection of a written contract. Jenny Hamara, herself an industry leader in the performing arts, has shared her experience of lending her voice to a voice-acting gig, and where she was not paid for three whole years. She said that in those instances where a written contract is available, hindi nakalagay sa kontrata kung kailan dapat bayaran ang isang freelancer. She shared how this has become a standard practice for voice actors and how a lot of freelancers have developed an attitude of not wanting to rock the boat for fear of being passed over for future projects. In short, discrimination. Ice Segarra, one of the most established names in the music industry and former Chairperson of the National Youth Commission, shared how as a singer-songwriter, some of the songs he wrote, which are his intellectual property, were used in a film without him receiving any compensation or equity whatsoever. He also shared an instance when, minutes before performing in front of a live audience, the client told him that his payment would be delayed. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Speaker, there's a famous saying in the performing arts: "The show must go on." In instances such as these, when hundreds of patrons and fans are out there waiting, when you have already dedicated so much time and effort into preparing for a show that will satisfy the audience, what other choice does an artist like Mr. Segarra have, other than to go on? The stories shared by him, his wife, and Ms. Hamara are only some of the persisting problems besetting the workers in the gig economy. Workers whose tenure in this ECQ and transitioning into the low-touch economy, or the new normal, have become very much fraught with uncertainty. Unfortunately for freelancers and gig workers, they cannot rely on existing labor laws for protection as these do not apply to them due to the nature of freelance work. The outbreak of the pandemic and the subsequent ECQ only exacerbated the already deplorable conditions of members of the gig economy. While the ECQ may have been necessary, it has unfortunately left many of our creative workers and freelancers without a viable source of income now and into the foreseeable future. pundits are saying that the live events sector and creative industries that dabble in mass gatherings will be the last to recover among all. An estimate of nine whole months, to be exact, or what is the balance of twenty twenty and well into early part of twenty twenty-one, according to a survey conducted by NEDA during the ECQ to stakeholders within the MSME sector. Broadway and the West End alone, Broadway being the theater community in New York and West End being the theater community in London, have had rolling targets for reopening their theaters, with Broadway announcing a September reopening just a few weeks ago. But theater impresario and top theater producer Cameron MacIntosh, who produced the likes of Les Misérables, Phantom of the Opera, and Miss Saigon, which once starred our very own Lea Salonga, herself a freelancer, predicts that on both sides of the Atlantic, theater probably won't come back until next year. So what I'm saying, my dear colleagues, is that the insight of the top producer in the theater in the whole world corroborates the findings of the survey that was rolled out by NEDA. Under the ECQ, community gatherings and face-to-face interactions are prohibited. This has effectively canceled or postponed activities on which members of the creative and freelance sector rely on for income and for livelihood. This has likewise affected a slew of industries like venues and rentals, restaurants and bars, transport, and a whole value chain that is closely associated with this sector. The National Live Events Coalition PH states that by the end of the year, over one hundred thirty billion pesos worth of gross revenue from the live event sector would have been displaced due to COVID-19. They likewise project that the pandemic will affect more than two hundred eighty-four thousand individuals in the country who earn their income from live events, including workers and talents from the music industry who mount concerts. This data excludes the TV and film sector, which will also be adversely impacted by the new normal, especially those whose revenue streams include showing their output in brick and mortar cinemas nationwide. Kung walang teatro, concert, at live events, wala rin pong mga sinihan. In a recent town hall organized by the Film Development Council of the Philippines, which I had the privilege of attending, a representative from the Department of Health presented draft safety protocols for the sector that recommended that patrons in theaters and cinemas be seated at least two seats apart. This social distancing measure in the new normal, while very much necessary to prevent the spread of COVID-19, and of course, the welfare of our audiences and patrons should be of top priority. Unfortunately, this adversely affects stakeholders in the live event sector by decimating the seating capacity of venues from which they generate a huge chunk of their revenue. For most performing arts companies and concert producers, that's almost eighty to ninety percent of their revenue streams, with the remaining balance divided between diminishing institutional support from corporate partners and hardly any from the government, and other minimal revenue streams like food concessionaires, souvenirs, and merchandise. In a one-thousand-seater theater, possibly only three hundred to four hundred seats will be left. It has yet to be elucidated whether this rule applies not just horizontally but vertically as well, meaning two seats in front of the patron and two seats behind the patron that it should be vacant. So, my dear colleagues, if that were to be the case, then it would obliterate the seating capacity of theaters and movie houses by four-fifths. A one-thousand-seater theater would be down to two hundred seats for potential revenue. This is assuming that audiences even show up in the first place, given diminished consumer confidence, tightening of purse strings, and uncertainty in the new normal, especially where mass gatherings is vital to an industry's DNA. If break-even for most performing arts companies is fifty to sixty percent capacity sold of their theater, or for the likes of Ovation Productions, a concert production company whose purveyors shared with TV host David Seldran in a recent ANC interview that they would need to sell at least eighty percent of their tickets just to break even, then why bother mounting shows and live events to begin with? If these estimates and projections from the National Live Events Coalition PH don't bother us, then perhaps real-time data will. A survey conducted by NEDA and the Department of Finance on MSMEs indicates that the arts, entertainment, and recreation is the number-one hardest-hit sector in terms of revenue loss. I believe you have a slide for that? Yes, there you go. With eighty-two point three percent average losses in number of sales. In terms of job loss, on the other hand, the arts, entertainment, and recreation sector is the sixth hardest-hit sector with thirty-nine thousand four hundred forty-six jobs lost, according to the same survey. Note the limitations of NEDA's survey based on who responded or who got forwarded the link during the ECQ. But the National Live Events Coalition lists more than three hundred thousand jobs being displaced for the live event sector alone. According to ILostMyGig.ph, a private sector initiative organized to get a more diverse snapshot of the gig economy, as of May eleven, more than two hundred fifty million pesos worth of income has been lost due to the pandemic. A total of four thousand one hundred seventy-five people were surveyed coming from various sectors such as arts, design, entertainment, media, retail, and health and wellness. The biggest industries affected so far are arts and media, each with over one thousand employees affected as per this survey, which again had its own set of limitations. This key determinant of arts, entertainment, and recreation being the heaviest hit is very much consistent with the findings of the DOF and NEDA, as well as the study generated by the National Live Events Coalition. But what we have to realize altogether, my dear colleagues, Mr. Speaker, is that the data gathered by these entities, whether public or private, are not just statistics. Each one of these numbers represents a human being, a Filipino who has a family to feed, rent to pay, and other expenses that must be met in order to survive on a day-to-day basis, not to mention surviving a pandemic and the scary uncertain new normal that is already upon us. But don't take it from me, take it from the words of one of the respondents to ILostMyGig.ph's survey herself. She says, "As a full-time artist with no definite monthly salary, relying solely on art sales and project commissions, I find my savings depleting very fast. I recently gave up the lease of my art studio since I cannot afford it anymore on top of my basic twenty-four-square-meter home apartment where I live alone. In the middle of all of this, I'm currently five months pregnant with no assurance when my OB doctor's clinic will be open again." To make matters worse for our struggling creative workers and freelancers, the stress of not having enough support for their basic necessities and the lack of human interaction due to the quarantine have been causing a toll on their mental health and well-being as well. I'm sure this is true for many Filipinos from other sectors. If I may share another quote by one of the respondents, "Given all of these uncertainties, I find myself in a slow downward spiral to bouts of anxiety and ceaseless worry that it has affected my concentration and have shelve any desire to create or to be productive. As the days go on, it gets harder to imagine how I will float financially and professionally in the next few months, and most of all with the arrival of the baby in August twenty twenty." Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, this is the current state of freelance workers or freelancers in the gig economy. As you have heard, even before COVID-19, this was a sector already vulnerable to economic difficulties and one that generally lacks welfare and protection, and admittedly, regulation from the state. The spread of the pandemic has only made matters worse as they are now also deprived of their source of income and face numerous and insurmountable challenges in the new normal. Workers from this sector do not enjoy most benefits from social amelioration programs currently being implemented by the state. Due to the gaps in our current laws and policies, these workers are in a policy limbo. They are not formal workers entitled to receive emergency employment assistance from Dole through camp, and neither are they included in the list of priority recipients of the social amelioration programs of the DSWT. There was an initial move by Dole to partner with the NCCA, or the National Commission for Culture and the Arts, to administer TUPAD to a few thousand stakeholders from the sector, which actually numbers to the hundreds of thousands. But alas, Dole's coffers has run dry, and the partnership did not come... and the partnership did not come into full fruition. Of course, we must recognize the good work that some of our government actors have been doing to assist members of the gig economy during this ECQ. My sincerest thanks and gratitude to the local government units who were magnanimous and encompassing in their food and cash assistance programs that may have reached the households of these freelancers and workers in the gig economy. I would also like to commend the National Commission for Culture and the Arts under the leadership of Chairman Nick Lizazo for realigning some of its limited funds to provide three million pesos to each of its seventeen national subcommittees, or a total of fifty-four million pesos, for distribution to stakeholders coming from architecture, literary arts, galleries, museums, cultural education, cinema, and the dramatic arts, among others. These were implemented in the form of a one-time cash assistance of five thousand pesos per beneficiary as pantawid during the quarantine, benefiting a total of ten thousand eight hundred vulnerable stakeholders. I must also commend the Film Development Council of the Philippines under the stellar and enterprising leadership of Chairperson Lisa Dino Segura for successfully realigning some of their funds for the Disaster Emergency Assistance and Relief Program, or DIR, which provided eight thousand pesos cash assistance to some two thousand workers in the audiovisual and live event sector. Though in a letter that the Arts and Culture Block of the Eighteenth Congress endorsed the Speaker's office last March twenty-four, of which the likes of Deputy Speakers Lauren de Garda and Dan Fernandez, as well as Congressman Yul Cervonieto, Camille Villar, and Alfred Vargas were among its signatories themselves, freelancers and creative workers once upon a time during their stint as TV and movie personalities. The FDCP was requesting for an additional budget of four hundred million pesos to be able to provide assistance to fifty thousand more displaced workers in the audiovisual sector. Like I said, in the live event sector alone, there are three hundred thousand displaced workers, and in the audiovisual sector, there are four hundred sixty thousand displaced workers. So both the financial assistance dispersed by NCCA and FDCP in their current capacity are welcome, but they're not enough. We continue to call the attention of our House leadership here in Congress and the economic managers on this pressing matter. While these initiatives are commendable, they are at the same time palliative and not enough to sustain freelancers through the two-month ECQ and most especially in the new normal, until a vaccine is discovered or when consumer confidence is restored. I reiterate, a huge chunk of these workers will be affected and displaced insofar as number one, ban on mass gatherings and its impact on specific industries. Number two, social distancing protocols that while very much necessary would prove deleterious to their industry's sustainability, especially for those in live events. And number three, the contraction of consumer confidence across the board. If they are to continue in the new normal, we must institutionalize programs that will ensure their survival. Allow me to present five ideas which we can explore to achieve this purpose. First, we must put in place mechanisms whereby freelancers can be formally recognized by the state and where they can be provided not only with dignity in lieu of their contributions to society, but also welfare in and outside of this pandemic. Yes, there was help from NCCA and FDCP, but for lack of resources, it's not enough to cover their displacement in the last two months of the lockdown and possibly the next six to eight months of the new normal. In fact, some of them have had to mobilize in their own capacity as private sector stakeholders to fundraise for their own during their own survival. Lockdown Cinema, for example, organized a highly successful fundraising initiative for displaced film workers, streaming films and creating online content to generate funds. But like most who have migrated their content online, it's exposed them to the perils of online piracy and violation of intellectual intellectual property rights. Open House, which this representation helped convene, organized a two-month-long online fundraising initiative for displaced workers in the performing arts, and I thank majority of our colleagues who heeded the call and helped out in this noble cause. I'd also like to give special thanks to Congresswoman Crystal Bagat Singh for her significant contribution to this initiative. Performing arts workers who are displaced include stage managers, dressers, lightsmen, sound engineers, artist teachers, and the like. National Artist for Music Maestro Ryan Kayabian and the conveners of Bayanihan Musikahan helped raise tremendous funds in partnership with the country's top OPM artists, not only for displaced workers in the music industry, but also for medical frontliners and for the urban poor of Metro Manila and its contiguous communities. Freelance concert workers organized Faith Over Fear to raise funds for their vulnerable and displaced stakeholders as well. Comedian Vice Ganda also launched a fundraising initiative for stand-up comedians and the hundreds of freelance workers both on stage and off, and so many more that you've likely seen or heard of online. Again, while these private sector initiatives are very much welcome and very much laudable, in fact, I salute these artists who galvanize their networks in the bayanian spirit despite the uncertainty of their industries and livelihood in the new normal to be able to help the most vulnerable among them. We must shift the burden now to those mandated to serve and protect them, the state. In deliberating fiscal stimulus proposals, I reiterate the need for substantial wage subsidies and financial assistance to freelancers to help them cope with their displacement and loss of income in the new normal and to MSMEs that dabble in these industries. My second proposal, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, we must put in place capacity-building programs and support mechanisms aimed at assisting stakeholders of the gig economy. The state must help freelancers and even production outfits that rely on modes of mass gathering for income generation, to upskill and retool, learn new ways of delivering content to their consumers, and help them evolve or even elevate their existing business models and revenue streams, to gear up for the Fourth Industrial Revolution and ignite a shift towards the so-called knowledge economy, as mentioned in the Philippine Development Plan prepared by NEDA during the start of the Duterte administration. It was mentioned in a recent tourism hearing that I attended that digital tourism products are now being monetized in countries like Portugal. A recent CNN report also posited a boom in digital safari and wildlife content in South Africa that workers in the region have now been able to monetize in the interim while tourism is very much shot. Perhaps government through the DTI and GoNegocio Centers as well as the Department of Tourism, since many of these stakeholders are part of that value chain as well, insofar as cultural tourism and maestrism is concerned, perhaps they can provide or generate public sector-led or supported platforms whereby freelancers may promote and monetize their talents and creative services online, among other marketing and direct-to-consumer initiatives. If stakeholders in the creative economy were to venture into digital content production, perhaps the DTI or the Board of Investors can help connect them to markets both here and abroad. In FDCP's position paper, it was mentioned that in twenty nineteen, creative industries which include the film and audiovisual sector were key drivers of our export economy. In the National Export Congress, as mentioned in the paper, DTI Secretary Mon Lopez stressed that apart from making our creative talent pool more competitive and attractive in international markets, we should be pushing for more trade and intellectual property rights activities. Again, a shift to the knowledge economy. Of course, we can always look into our own backyard for this kind of support. Maybe in the new normal, the state itself can become a market for this digital content that will evolve out of these creative disruptions. Case in point, upgrading DEP Ed's MAPE curriculum by incorporating digital content through its DEP Ed Commons or multimodal learning upon the resumption of classes. Imagine music classes being conducted to all of our millions of learners by the likes of Ryan Kayabian or peppered with insights from National Treasure Lea Salonga, or dance classes being conducted by the likes of Lisa Makuha Elizalde and other foremost stakeholders in the dance industry, and many other industry leaders who in their shift to digital content during this new normal can bolster the knowledge and skills of our learners in the public school system and especially the senior high school track, which continues to be challenged with low enrollment in arts and design as well as sports. Which leads me, Mr. Speaker, and my dear colleagues, to my third recommendation. For the state to galvanize our creative industries to embark on a carefully crafted communication campaign to restore and inspire consumer confidence, not only for the creative economy and its network of freelancers, but across all industries that are heavily impacted by COVID nineteen. Communication is key for any stakeholder in the public sector, and what more powerful way to communicate than through culture and creative industry that helps shape and mold our collective consciousness. Fourth, we can explore the option of enacting regulatory forbearance as stakeholders within these industries transition into the new normal. Considering the exigencies of the current circumstances, we must look into relaxing existing policies that directly and indirectly affect those belonging to this sector. One such policy that we may look into is the imposition of amusement tax under the Local Government Code. While this is vital to local government revenues in the pre-COVID nineteen world, in the new normal, it becomes an additional burden on stakeholders who are just trying their best to recalibrate their business and to survive. And lastly, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, we call on government agencies such as the Philippine Statistics Authority, the Department of Trade and Industry, the Philippine Institute of Development Studies, DOF, and NEDA in collaboration with cultural agencies like the Film Development Council of the Philippines, the Intellectual Property Office of the Philippines, and the National Commission for Culture and the Arts, as well as the private sector, to ramp up efforts in collecting and consolidating data in order to generate a more vivid picture of our creative industries. In the New Normal Committee hearing last Monday, NEDA Usec Rosemarie Edilion mentioned the need for targeted interventions and the need for disaggregated data in order to determine what these targeted interventions would be. These could lead to more sound policies, industry roadmaps for subsector of our creative economy, and generate responsive programs to cater to this rising star of our Philippine economy. Professor Segura from the UP School of Economics argues that there are no official estimates on the size of the gig economy in the Philippines. While the surveys I cited earlier are a good start, and it had to take a crisis of this magnitude for everyone, both public and private sector, to come together, there remains a pressing need to determine the creative industry's potency and innate power. Institutionalizing such data gathering initiatives will allow us to get a clearer picture of just how much revenue is being generated by the gig economy, how many jobs are created and are therefore displaced or affected by the ECQ and the new normal, its value chain and multiplier effect, i.e., impacts on domestic and local tourism, if in the end, how the public sector responds always boils down to numbers. My dear colleagues, let me remind you that tourism, once upon a time, was only five point eight percent of our country's GDP between two thousand and two thousand ten. But when Republic Act nine five nine three or the Tourism Act of two thousand nine was enacted, proper policies and sound programs were put in place to allow the tourism industry to flourish to what is now twelve point nine percent of our country's GDP. Based on a study conducted by the Philippine Institute of Development Studies in twenty fourteen, creative industries was right around the same range, four point three percent to five point four percent of the country's GDP in two thousand eight and two thousand nine. Imagine what we can do for our creative economy and its ecosystem of freelancers if we move forward with creativity and foresight in the new normal and as we start thinking about legacy of the Duterte administration. Dear colleagues, I know that COVID nineteen pandemic and the ECQ have been hard on all of us. For those of us who are privileged enough to have had access to television and the internet, we must remind ourselves, who created the shows that we binged on in Netflix, iFlix, I Want TV, cable, and free TV that kept us company amidst our isolation? Who made it possible to watch live streams of theater, ballet, and opera productions that brought us entertainment and inspiration and even introspection? Who wrote the biographies, novels, fiction, articles, and think pieces we read that stimulated our brains and transported us into worlds that we couldn't access any longer? Who created the paintings, the drawings, the comic books, the graphic novels, and all the other visual media that inspired us to wonder and made us dream? Who composed the music that woke us up in the morning, kept us company through the long afternoons, and put us to slumber at night? Who developed the video games that connected our youth and the young at heart in cyberspace despite the physical boundaries of the quarantine? The questions pile up, but the answer is simple. Freelancers, creative workers, and workers in the gig economy. We relied on them during this quarantine for our mental health, for our wellness, and yes, for our survival. We relied on them even long before the pandemic, and we will continue to rely on them in this new normal. Now, in their time of need, they rely on us as well. I simply ask that this body not forget about them as we move forward in the new normal or as this legislative body decides on its legacy for both the Eighteenth Congress and for the Duterte administration. A gentle reminder that arts and culture is number eight in the ten-point socioeconomic agenda. This is an opportunity, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, to build, 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 or in the words of our speaker Alan Peter Kaitana, to build back better in order to reshape a world with hopefully our gig economy and creative industries at the forefront. If South Korea has creative industries as among the top drivers of its economy, I believe the Philippines, given our creative potential and if properly galvanized with sound policies, programs, roadmaps, and maybe even a seat at the big table, we can do the same, if not better. I mean, just look at all the YouTube videos of foreigners and global players all dancing to the song Tala by Sara Heronimo, which went viral, meaning to say, culture, creative industry has the power to reach absolutely everyone. As legislators, we have the capacity to make that difference. But as with everything else in this pandemic, time is of the essence. We must act with haste, but also with foresight. We can't return, my dear colleagues, to business as usual. We have a unique opportunity to recreate our society with business unusual, a society where our knowledge economy, our freelancers, and our creative industries are finally at the forefront. Before I end, my dear colleagues, Before I end, my dear colleagues, Mr. Speaker, I just want to thank all of you for even providing a listening ear to all the messages, proposals, and ideas contained within this privileged speech. Our office is very much open to work with you to craft measures that will help stimulate the creative economy. I am currently working on several proposals and will gladly take in as many co-authors as possible so that we can finally help the creative economy realize its fullest potential. An ongoing joke for the longest time as a stakeholder in the creative industry myself is that if the Philippines could pay for all of its utam, or debt, with talent alone, then we might already have been long in the green. And, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, I believe that's true. We have so much creative talent, and a lot of them have had to undergo brain drain or go abroad for lack of opportunities here. And a lot of the stakeholders in that industry have had to rely on their own capacity to be able to be successful with hardly any support from government and the state. And sometimes po nakakasagabal pa sila. So sana po, my dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Speaker, pakinggan naman po natin ang creative economy, ang creative industries. At sana po, huwag rin natin kalimutan ang freelancers na malaking parte ng ating buhay at ng ating ekonomiya. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, thank you and good afternoon.
Majority Leader.
Um, Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Bataan, the Honorable Geraldine Roman, for her interpolation.
The Honorable Geraldine B. Roman of the First District of Bataan is recognized for her interpolation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Can you hear me? I would just like to confirm.
Please proceed.
Yes, my dearest beloved colleague, I can hear you.
Thank you very much. I would like to beg for your indulgence. My video is not working. But I would like to ask the brilliant and talented representative of the Fourth District of Pangasinan if he would yield to a few comments and to just a few questions.
Gladly.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. First of all, I would like to congratulate my dear colleague for what is actually a firsthand testimony of the current situation of a much neglected sector in our economy and in society. Hindi po lingid sa ating kaalaman kapag nagsalita po ang kinatawa ng ikapat na distrito ng Pangasinan. Ito po ay may hugot sapagat siya po ay galing din sa sektor na ito. Isa po siyang talented theater director, mahilig po siya sa musika, at talaga namang pong may pinanggagalingan at mayroong inalaman ang kanyang sinabi. I want to thank the representative of the Fourth District of Pangasinan for calling our attention to the plight of a much neglected sector. And this is the sector of the creative and performing arts as well as events organization, more commonly known as the gig and the creative industries. Ah, sa matagal na panahon po, ay napabayaan po ito mga sektor na ito sapagat ito po ang malungkot na katutokhanan, these sectors are considered as nonessential. Pero the sad thing is that hindi lang po ito nakonconsider as nonessential in this time of the COVID crisis. Pati na rin po nung panahon na bago pa tayo magkaroon ng krisis dahil sa COVID-19, ay napapabayaan na rin po ang mga sektor na ito. Pero alam ko, lahat sa atin ay kinikilala natin ang kahalagahan ng mga sektor na ito. Sabi nga sa Biblia, "Not by bread alone does man live." But of course, I want to continue by saying, we also have to feed our souls. We have to be more complete human by feeding our spirit through the arts, through culture, and these are only possible for the industry that for the longest time have been neglected. Nagpapasalamat din ako kay Congressman De Venesia sapagat ang malaking bahagi ng gigs at saka ng creative industries belong also to the LGBT sector. Siyempre, ang mga freelancers po natin, maraming mga designers, marami rin pong mga nag-aayos ng ating buhok, nagpapaganda sa atin, mga script writers, marami po sa kanila ay sa ngayon walang trabaho. At ang malungkot po sila po ay mga breadwinners, at hindi po sila, they were not even considered as beneficiaries of our SAP program po. So, ganay is kusalan ang tanungin sa ating kasamahan, kung meron kang figures na exacto more or less, ganun sa mga nabanggit mo, kung ilan ang galing sa LGBT community na naaafektuhan, alam ko marami talaga. Meron ka bang mga figures or statistics ito?
Mr. Speaker, thank you so much for that question, my distinguished colleague, my beloved colleague from Bataan. Unfortunately, that data has not been disaggregated from the figures that I presented. Definitely, it's very worth investigating and looking into. But offhand, I know for a fact that a lot of our beloved members of the LGBTQIA+ sector percolate these industries of the creative economy. It seems to be some kind of, it's sort of like a summation of their creative potential to be in such industries that allows them to express themselves and their creativity. So, as we call on NEDA, Mr. Speaker, and the Philippine Institute of Development Studies, the DOF, the DTI, in partnership with the FDCT, the NCCA, to create these studies, perhaps it can be included as a criteria or a data item to also be able to disaggregate and extract which of these members are part of the LGBTQIA+ community so that we can also put in place the policies that will respond to that sector as well, that is also in very much need of help and support from our government.
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker? Yes, I would like to join my colleague in appealing for the adoption of the measures that you just mentioned. And I would just like to remind also our colleagues na hindi po pang habang buhay ang krisis ng COVID-19. At kung papabayaan natin ang mga sektor na ito na hindi sila makakasurvive, ano na lang po ang mangyayari sa atin pag na-normalized na ang ating mga buhay. Personally, I cannot imagine a life without music, the arts, performing arts, ang ating mga events. Alam po ninyo, ang sektor na ito po ang nagpapagawa ng ating mga buhay na mas maging memorable, more bearable, and more beautiful. So muli po, nais ko nga congratulate ang ating kalibigan mula sa ikapat na distrito ng Pangasinan. At kunin nagpapasalamat sa kanyang pagtawag na itang atensyon sa isang sektor na napababayaan po natin. At sana po, kaysan man talahin natin ang pagkakataong ito upang bigyan sila ng karampatang suporta. At tumut na rin po sa pagtapos ng krisis na ito, ay mabigyan po sila ng due recognition. Maraming salamat po, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat po kay Congressman Tof De Venesia.
Maraming salamat din. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable De Venesia to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved in this privileged speech of the Honorable De Venesia along with the interpolation of the Honorable Roman are referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we recognize Representative Greg Gassetaya from the Lone District of Bacolod City for his privileged speech. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Honorable Greg Gassetaya of the Lone District of Bacolod City is recognized for his privileged speech.
Collective privilege, Mr. Speaker. Allow me to be direct on this urgent matter in pursuit of our constitutional duty to promote the rights and welfare of our workers, Mr. Speaker. This stems from the implementation of the Department of Labor and Employment's COVID-19 or Camp Program for our affected workers that has triggered a lot of questions, reactions, and if I may be frank, Mr. Speaker, pointed accusations. Mr. Speaker, I see this, however, as reactions from worried and anxious Filipinos are constipated to struggle to survive amid the crisis, Mr. Speaker. This can't be any other thing but pleas for help. During the past few weeks, Mr. Speaker, affected workers and their employers, those who have less and those who have done at all, have reached out to this representation. Allow me very briefly, Mr. Speaker, to sum up what I have gathered. In Western Visayas, out of 3,716 establishments that have applied for Dole's Cash Assistance Program, only 1,418 were covered by the program due to the insufficiency of funds, according to Dole Region 6, Mr. Speaker. Employees here in Bacolod City, on the other hand, informed this representation that most of their affected workers voluntarily disclosed the information to barangay workers about their application to avail of Dole's cash subsidy program, thus making themselves not qualified from availing the social amelioration program, Mr. Speaker. It is very unfortunate that some of the affected establishments who did not qualify for Dole's camp were informed only two weeks ago about the denial of their applications. Mr. Speaker, this made employers of small-scale businesses unable to apply for the Department of Finance's Small Business Wage Subsidy Program, the application for which ended last May 8, Mr. Speaker, and not to mention that there were also those who were disqualified from the said program of the Department of Finance. Apparently, Mr. Speaker, there are affected workers who have not availed of anything and were not able to receive the much badly needed help from the government, which is evident and undeniable. In Bacolod City alone, Mr. Speaker, and the province of Negroes Occidental, about 60,000 applications were denied due to lack of funds, Mr. Speaker. So as part of our oversight functions in the implementation of the Bayani and Tuilas One Act, may I humbly propose the following. First, Mr. Speaker, that the national government agencies should streamline emergency assistance or subsidy programs, making it easier and less confusing for those who want to avail of the much-needed help, along with a more responsive system to address queries and disseminate information regarding applications, Mr. Speaker. Second, that an automatic referral system be established that would allow the agency which initially denied the application for assistance to automatically forward such application to another agency which possesses the same capacity and mandate to extend the assistance sought by the affected applicant. Meaning, Mr. Speaker, kung nagapply ka na sa Dole, finoward sa DOF, that should already be considered as an application, and DOF will only require the applicant for additional documents and need not apply again, as this is a very strenuous process, Mr. Speaker. As we continue to listen to the plea and cries for help of our brethren and search for immediate solutions to their problems, Mr. Speaker, I so humbly submit. Madamo, gi' salamat, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me edmaayong gabhi sa tanan-tan.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the privileged speech of the Honorable Representative Greg Gassetaya be, the privileged speech be referred to the Committee on Rules for its appropriate action. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The speech of the Honorable Greg Gassetaya of the First District, the Lone District of Bacolod is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to close the privilege hour.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. Privilege hour is closed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to immediately transmit to the Senate the House Bills approved on Third Reading today, namely House Bills 5083, House Bill 6137, 6139, 5855, 2397, 4939, 5027, 6441, 6442, 6443, 6445, 6446, 6447, 6448, 6467, 6491, and 6492.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Move to suspend.
Session suspended.
Tapos eh, explain ba natin bakit may perdi?
Tapos i-explain ba natin bakit may penalty? No, pero 'yung four o'clock.
Oo lang.
Yeah, okay. Pasasabihin ko lang kung kailan. Anong concurrent? Ano yun? Tayo na lang eh. Anong gustong mat? Nasaan ka siya tulang? Nung ba't may sumitong? Sino bang makakasubukan? Nakalala ko 233 na binila ko lumabas ka. Wala? Ikaw ganun ba? Kasi when you put it in the jar, when you put it in the jar, and then it is approved. Oh, kasi some of them may not like that. Game? Ano lang? Nasaan na yung ano? Ikaw, wala pa. Uy, siyang copy lang? Saipay pwede siya. On next, sandale ah. Just day four. What's a concurrent? Ano yan? Ano dito? Magmo-motion siya na may concurrent. Tapos meron ka ng concurrent. Ano yan? Ano yan? Ano lang yan? Any objections gonna land? Ano? Ano? Kongiting ko na rin 'yung franchise, legislative franchise. You legislative franchise. Kasi four o'clock tayo, three o'clock. Oh, dito. In solidarity with our Muslim brothers and sisters, and in consideration of our community, you legislative franchise. More important. Message. Message. Tapos. In accordance with our rules. In accordance with our rules. Concur with. Senate amendment. Hindi na 'yung iba diba?
Mr. Speaker.
Session resumes.
Mrs. Speaker, we are in receipt of a message from the Senate informing the House that the Senate passed with amendment House Bill Number 4581 renewing for another 25 years the franchise granted to Golden Broadcast Professional Incorporated. Mr. Speaker, we have been advised at the Committee on Legislative Franchises, sponsor of the said House bill as well as the author, thereof have no objection to the amendments introduced thereto by the Senate. In accordance with our rules, I move with the Senate, I move to concur with the Senate the amendment to House Bill Number 4581. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Resolution Number 846 from the Committee on Good Government and Accountability to the Committees on Legislative Franchises and Good Government and Public Accountability.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Speaker, I move for the change of referral of House Resolution Number 853 from the Committee on Legislative Franchises to the Committees on Legislative Franchise and Good Government and Public Accountability.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn the session until Tuesday, May 26 at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
In solidarity with our Muslim brothers and sisters, the House will not be holding session on Monday, May 25. We are adjourned until May 26, Tuesday, at 4:00 p.m.